Okay, I call to order the regular meeting of Tuesday, March fifth, two thousand twenty-four, of the CMR Unified School District Board of Education. And using my fancy gavel. May the roll call reflect that everyone is here. Where's Ms. Pham?
She should be on her way.
Okay. Except for Ms. Pham and Ms. Naomi Vanyay. As soon as Ms. Pham's here, please, let's note it in the minutes. I'm looking for a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
I move adoption of the agenda for the regular meeting of Tuesday, March fifth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second. It's been moved by trustee Stewart, second by trustee Santos, to approve the adoption of the agenda. Roll call vote, please. Stewart?
Aye.
Santos?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Kendall?
Yes.
Martin? Yes. Motion passes five zero. Um, we have the minutes tonight from February thirteenth of regular meeting. Does anyone have any questions or concerns regarding the draft minutes? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion. I move we adopt the minutes from February thirteenth, two thousand twenty. Second. It's been moved by trustee mayor, second by trustee Kendall, to approve the minutes of February thirteenth. Roll call vote. Mayor?
Yes.
Kendall?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
Stewart?
Aye.
Martin? Yes. Motion passes five. Prior to going into closed session, we'll accept public comment on closed session agenda items. I have a yellow card from Mr. Bill Ridge, and you're welcome to come to the podium. And Cody, if you'd like to pass out what you have, you're welcome to.
Do I touch a button or am I?
It's alive, it picks you up.
When you see green, Mr. Ridge, it should light up for you.
Anytime you talk.
Oh, I don't know.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, well.
President Martin, would you tell me when you'd like me to start the timer?
What was that?
To tell me when you'd like me to start the timer, since Dr. Handy isn't here.
Oh, okay. Oh. Yes, Mr. Ridge. Dr. Fawcett will be in charge of the timer. You have three minutes to address the board. We welcome your comments. Start whenever you like.
Okay, thank you, everyone. I was here, there's, I don't know if it's a disconnect or a misunderstanding or a really strong disagreement or somewhere in between about the proposal by the district to require TK and K teachers to do up to three extra hours of work of duties each week in addition to our responsibilities as a TK or K teacher. And our, you know, regarding to our prep time each week. Our prep time is vital to our success as teachers. I can't tell you in three minutes that everything that we do for our prep or how important that is for the success of our students. You know, if you want to have a meal or a cup of coffee, I'm, you know, myself or any other TK or K teacher would love to talk with you. But our, our current contract has language speaking to class size reduction. This is related to prep time. And, and for context, that class size reduction language in our contract was created in response to or after the nineteen ninety-six implementation by Governor Pete Wilson of twenty-two-one for grades K through two, which was phased out, I believe, in two thousand and two. I'm not sure of the year by when Arnold Schwarzenegger was governor. But since then, every elementary teacher has had guaranteed in our contract a hundred and fifty minutes of prep time. And that's, and, and even though the, the, the language still talks about class size and things, but that, but the practice is everybody gets the full, the hundred and fifty minutes. And prep time for grades one through six is provided through a hundred minutes of PE each week and ten minutes added on to their thirty-minute duty-free lunch for that hundred and fifty minutes. Prep time for TK and kindergarten has always been understood to be the time between when our students leave and the first through sixth grade students leave. So it's part of the student day as what prep time is, but not ours, not the, the student day when our students were actually there. And it, and it has been, may have been falsely presented to you, but it has been falsely presented in the district's current bargaining proposal that TK and K teachers, we don't work a full day. It's been proposed that TK and K teachers may be assigned up to two hours a day and three hours a week in extra duties. And there's also no guarantee in their proposal that these extra duties will not require a teacher's own time to prepare for them. And, and there's a lot of numbers and things, I kind of wrote these down. But the true difference between the student contact time for a TK K teacher and other grades is fifty-five minutes a day. And, and then, but remembering that the other grades have during their student day a hundred and fifty minutes a week of prep time. And what it works out to a hundred and twenty-five minutes a week. And we LMUTA believe strongly that that hundred and twenty-five minutes should be protected as prep time for the TK and K teachers and not encroached upon. But the district's current proposal would provide far less time each day for a TK or K teacher than they are, than the other grades are getting. And the premise of the job, that being a great TK or K teacher is somehow, anyway, less demanding than the job of being a great fifth, first through sixth grade teacher is soundly rejected by us. The notion that because a TK or K teacher may have fewer minutes of time with students in other grades, that we are now available for intervention, tutoring, subbing, ELD, extra duties, defies the logic that we should be devoted to the success of our students in our classroom.
Three minutes is up, so you can.
Is that it?
Are you almost done? Copy that.
I'm almost done, I'm sorry, yes. And then the, and then, you know, it should fall to the district administration or side administration to provide support for other needed educational enrichment programs or to provide substitute coverage for other grades while they plan implementation of a new district program. And the past practice that many TK or K teachers have given up this time or have this time taken away from them is not justification for such practices to continue. And when you meet now to discuss bargaining before the district and LMUTA and the union meet tomorrow, I hope you'll carefully consider what we had here to share with you. And since there was numbers and things, I, I just, those other pages.
Yes.
Thank you so much for your time.
And please let the minute show that we do have receipt of this and that trustee Pham has joined us. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ridge.
Thank you, everyone.
Of course.
And I appreciate you giving Bill a couple of extra seconds, so I'll be extra brief. What we found in looking at the TKK prep time is that those teachers do as many duties in a day as the other grades do in a week. And so that time is comparable to the time that they have after their students leave for the day. So they're on with students, even if it's doing recess duty, doing the receiving kids in the parking lot. So they're doing all those duties where other teachers usually do one of them during the day. So that is really a comparable amount of time that they're not seeing kids or that, that they have after their kids go home for the day. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All righty, guys, we, thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate your comments. So seeing as there's no one else in the audience for public comment, we will be adjourning to closed session to discuss conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, conference with labor negotiators, public employee performance evaluation, public employee discipline dismissal, release complaint, and student discipline, case number twenty-three, twenty-four, dash, zero, twenty-eight, and other confidential student matters. We are closed to, we are closing the open session and going into closed session. Welcome. The board has been in closed session since five thirty-five. We're now reconvening into regular session. I do have an announcement to make out of our closed session time. In closed session, the board approved an agreement for the resignation of a permanent custodian. And the motion was six zero. The vote was six zero with Ms. Santos abstaining. Not abstaining, not taking part in the vote, sorry. Leila, we've got the mic, sweetie.
All right, thank President Martin. I'd like to invite up Leila to the mic. So I'm going to read a nice statement about you, Leila, but go ahead and come up to the front, please. So Leila Menrostro exemplifies excellence as a student. Every day, she consciously makes constructive decisions to excel in her studies, serving as an inspiring example to her peers. Her unwavering optimism and her determination to achieve are truly admirable. Leila shines brightly, spreading positively at Grover Beach IB World School. We're very proud to have Leila here tonight. We're very proud that Leila's mom is librarian at Grover Beach, too. And you can now lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Let's please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Leila, for representing not just your family, but your school. Well done on this voting day, one of our most patriotic things we can do to vote. And if any of you need to, please excuse yourself and go, you have one hour. We're going to start with communications with student representatives to the board. Savannah Willett and your trainee are welcome to come up and address the board. You weren't going to bring your guest?
Yeah.
Okay. Savannah's from Napomo High School, by the way.
Uh, for you guys who don't know, this is Ellie. She's the service dog that I'm fostering, Buggy Dugan in Pomos. And she's currently seven months old, and we're working on training her to be able to come to school with me. The chill right there while I report out. So our dedicated counselors have successfully concluded the registration process for upcoming academic year with our existing students. They also have been collaborating with the middle schools to facilitate the registration of the prospective ninth-grade students in crafting their four-year plans. These upcoming ninth graders will be guided to align with graduation and A through G requirements completed by the, complemented by the completion of the comprehensive CTE pathways. Napomo High School is honored to receive the support from the Diversity Coalition of SLO, bringing two Syrian refugees to share their experiences with our students. Additionally, Stephanie Spicer, an exemplary art student, stands as one of the ten finalists for the esteemed Monday Club Fine Arts Award. On February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four, our Model UN Club made its debut at a conference centered around universal access to education theme. Five students represented South Korea, Spain, Turkey, Ukraine, and the United Kingdom. Their club president, Nora Reed, representing Ukraine, received the Outstanding Delegate Award. The commendable success at their inaugural conference has fueled our students' enthusiasm for the upcoming competitions. Our FFA program had a successful February meeting featuring engaging activities such as The Bachelor and The Dating Game. They also participated in various events at UC Davis, including dairy judging and foreign power competitions. They are anticipating the Ag Friends Benefit Dinner at Thousand Hills Ranch. And our FFA program remains active with regional officers screening and upcoming regional speaking contests. This Monday, our link crew orchestrated the annual Renaissance Breakfast and event honoring students with a three-point-O or higher. Out of four hundred and eighty-eight qualifying students, two hundred were celebrating, were celebrated during this breakfast. Our ASB class has been recognized as a finalist for the Outstanding Leadership Award, and we hosted the eighth-grade tight night showcasing the CTE pathways, clubs, and sports. We also hosted a successful but, blood drive, and all of our spots that we put out were filled. These achievements underscore the commitment to excellence in diverse engagement within our academic activity, and we look forward to continuing to show Titan pride in the upcoming months. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Savannah. From Lopez High School and Alternative Ed, Alexi Hutchinson.
Good evening, board and attendees. Thank you all for giving me the opportunity to share with you news and events from Lopez High School at Pacific View Academy. Everyone had fun at our winter-themed community day last week. The rain had stopped, and the weather was ideal for our fried chicken lunch, simulated team skiing, baked snowball toss, cornhole, and of course, football. We are gathering student input in order to paint a new mural on the handball wall near the basketball courts that celebrates all three programs within Alternative Education, Lopez, PVA, and Adult Ed. Once the design is approved in the next week or two, the real fun begins. Students will be able to earn community service hours, prepping and painting the entire mural. In the Lopez School Garden, students have planted lettuce, radish, carrots, and pole bean seeds for a spring harvest. We have also incorporated a worm bin for composting. Bonnie Davis conducts four weekly social and emotional support groups helping our student body at Lopez. We use a variety of creative activities to reduce anxiety, promote greater mental health, and foster discussion. Rock painting as a mindful and nice activity is taking place on our campus this week. We will also have a speaking group called Freedom Calling come to Lopez in March to do a presentation with our social and emotional learning groups and our health classes. They specialize in educating the public about the harsh realities of human trafficking and how to protect oneself on social media, gaming platforms, and in the community. ID Row, our career center technician, took a few of our Lopez students to tour Grizzly Youth Academy in San Luis Obispo to see if it was a good next step for them. Tomorrow, a group of students is going to the Performing Arts Center at Questa College to experience an Orchestra Novo performance, Fly Me to the Moon, where images of the solar system will be accompanied by orchestral music. Lopez is also hosting the Second Annual Tea Party Fundraiser for Women Aid on March twenty-second, giving us an opportunity to show our gratitude for their ongoing support of our school community. That's it for Lopez and PVA. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Okay, from Central Coast New Tech, hi Katie. You notice I didn't look on the last name.
Hello, everyone. I'm so excited to be able to give you updates on our school's activities from the past month and insight into all the events we have planned for March. Our next large event will be our Spring Fling Spirit Week, Spring Fling and Dance. Our Spring Fling Dance is on March fifteenth, and the theme is Garden Party. This dance kicks off our Spirit Week, which is themed Let Us Grow. Students will be participating in a step challenge along with the several advisory activities that promote collaboration, agency, and goal creation for the rest of the semester. Our Spring Feast will be on Monday, March the twenty-second, and this is a time for students and staff to recharge, rejuvenate, and celebrate all of the hard work and agency. We will also be celebrating a mathematical holiday, Pi Day, on March fourteenth, where students can compete for a pie of their choice by memorizing and reciting the most digits of pi. We are holding our Try Tip fundraiser, which will be on this Thursday, March seventh. An entire meal includes a whole try tip, a bag of salad, beans, and cookies. You can purchase a ticket for fifty dollars and pick it up after four PM at New Tech on Thursday. This is your last chance to purchase tickets. A special shout-out to Taylor Farms of Guadalupe, Vons of Grover Beach, and Napomo, CalFresh Market, and JJ's Market for their donations to make this fundraiser possible. Lastly, after spring break, our Science Department will be hosting a Space Day, where all students will have the opportunity to safely observe the solar eclipse and participate in activities that build cosmic awareness. Our ninth graders are presenting their License to Drive presentations this week, where they answer the driving question, how do we become safe and responsible drivers? They will be presenting a hypothetical road trip across the country and learning about the rules of the road. They are also learning about World War One to participate in New Tech's Night at the Museum event night. Our tenth-grade chemistry classes will be presenting their final self-care line of soaps, body butters, and scrubs to diorites this month in hopes of diorites bringing their products to the AG Farmers Market. They are also learning about the decades of the twentieth century to prepare for the Night at the New Tech Museum on April eighteenth. We encourage you all to mark your calendars so you can come and experience one of New Tech's biggest event nights. Juniors will be holding our annual commodity night on March fourteenth in Olympic Hall. We invite you all to come and compete for a fifty-dollar Jaco's gift card by showing off your knowledge of global trade routes and economics. Our seniors are working on their senior defense presentations and book-to-movie adaptation essays in senior English. They are also excited to start participating in senior activities to celebrate the end of their senior year. Now on to athletics, bands, theater, and clubs. Student athletes have been busy playing golf, volleyball, and beach volleyball. A significant percentage of the students on these teams are made up of New Tech students. For theater, we are very excited to watch Napomo High School's and New Tech's new musical Zombie Prom on March twenty-second and twenty-third. The Hysterical Artist Staff Show will also be on April eleventh at Napomo High School. For clubs, our garden club has been very active on campus, selling plants and germinating seedlings for their native garden plant sale in April. Lastly, our recruitment season is coming to an end. Our link crew has done an amazing job visiting ten middle schools in the CMR, Santa Maria, and Guadalupe School Districts, exposing over three thousand students to the magic of project-based learning in the last month and a half. As always, I would like to thank my leadership advisors, and thank you so much for listening.
Well done. And Kayla, last one, Sessana.
Good evening, trustees. It's only been a few weeks since I've seen you, but we've had a lot of things going on on campus, so I can't wait to share. First, I'd like to share what our leadership program has been up to. We are in recruitment season for our leadership program. Leadership applications just went out on Monday for all three classes. ASB is hosting a two-week intermural basketball tournament in the gym at lunch, and we have sixteen, sixteen teams playing daily. We also will be having a March Madness Bracket Competition, where advisory classes will predict winners for each round. A handful of us have been working on planning prom and promoting grad night ticket sales. Link Crew has been working on planning their annual academic carnival, which take, which takes place on March twenty-ninth. It allows kids to play games, eat food, and socialize with friends. And over one thousand two hundred and fifty-nine qualified, students qualified. AIM has been working on National Pi Day for our lunchtime activity, and will be passing out slices of pie to kids. And is passing out practice SAT good luck notes and tips. All three leadership classes have been helping organize Welcome to the Nest and clubs, sports, VPAs, CTEs, or CTEs, and are all signed up to showcase their program. Next, I'd like to share updates with you for clubs and, clubs and our programs. AGHS hosted a speech and debate tournament this weekend, where ten schools competed. And excited, and exciting news from this team is that Ziva Hartman and Bren Timmer have already qualified for a state tournament in policy debate. And lastly, Abbott Eleven is going on a field trip to NorCal universities such as San Jose, UC Berkeley, UC Santa Cruz, UC Davis, and some others as well. Now in academics, seniors recently had their senior meeting during advisory. We talked about prom, grad night, scholarships, and of course, graduation. Our counselors have been scheduling incoming freshmen, and will be attending along with some students to visit middle schools. And the final Castro College Night is scheduled for this Thursday. This will be the final event where seniors and their families can gain assistance in filling out this FAFSA. Now in the arts, Drama is performing three shows of the Comedy of Error and is going on this week, and the show runs up, the show runs through next week as well. Music and Choir Department has two shows coming up on the nineteenth and the twentieth of this month. And Grin and Bear Improv Team is performing on the Mar, on March twenty-second in the Clark Center. Now on to athletics. Women's varsity soccer had their first-ever appearance in this, in a CIF final and regional final. They came up in second in both CIF and state. This is the best they've ever done, and we are so proud of them. Our track and field team is running, is off and running. They've had their first track meet this at Paso High School. They had an amazing showing with all the throwers placing in first and multiple teams setting personal records. Our swim team has been working hard and have competed in two swim meets already this season. They both, they both got first in those. The baseball team has been going up to a lot of away tournaments as well. Freshman JV and varsity have been putting hard work in and continue to make big wins. And finally, our Hangout Club is co-hosting a unified track meet with Napomo High School on March twenty-second, twenty-second, from eight-thirty in the morning to twelve-thirty in the afternoon. Hangout Club, along with leadership students, will be coaching and cheering on our narrow-diverse students as they compete in four events, including the softball throw, long jump, one-hundred-meter dash, and a relay. We encourage all of you to come and see this amazing event. And finally, we would like to congratulate Napomo High School as both they and our AGHS leadership program have earned the Outstanding Leadership Program Award through the California Association of Students Leaders Organization. Only five percent of schools in the state of California earn this honor. Thank you.
Thank you. We love hearing what's going on in our high schools. And before I move forward with our items of interest from the board, I did want to introduce two special people in the audience. We have a retired school board trustee, Terry Akaran. If you could just wave, Terry. Who walks out up here. We have Dr. James Bresch, the superintendent of the County Office of Education, and he oversees everything financial that we send up there. Our LCAP, all sorts of things, his office oversees and says yea or nay. Would you like to say anything, Dr. Bresch?
Dr. Bresch will be reporting under my superintendent's report.
Awesome. I always like to preempt, Dr. Fawcett. Okay, items of interest from the board. Anyone have anything they'd like to share?
I just would like to say thank you for the business cards that we got with the information on the back that highlights how to join Team LCMR. I passed out a couple at the tax office, and they were well-received. Being able to give that information to some retired people, and they're interested in helping our schools.
Great.
Thank you for those cards.
I'll go. I just want to say, Dr. Bresch, it's great that you're here. The entire board went and did a professional development session put on by the County Office of Education. It was really informative, it was great, so thank you for that, Dr. Bresch, and really sort of bringing all the districts together. And I just want to thank my colleagues, because we were the only districts, and, and Dr. Fawcett, to have all the trustees there participating. And time and again, this board shows their commitment to, to learning and growing and modeling, that growth mindset. And I just want to shout out, congratulations to Paulding and AG High School for being awarded Distinguished School Award this year. It's quite an accomplishment.
Anyone else? Ms. Santos?
Yes. Me too. I want to thank you, Dr. Bresch, for bringing us all together. As, as school board members, it's fun to learn, even though we think we know it all, we don't. So thank you for that. Also, we went to a reclassification thing last week. It's so fun to see these young children up there, all dressed up. The one little boy that stood out was with his shirt and tie. And some children, they come up and they're, they're so shy, and you thank them, and they kind of look up at you and smile and that. That means so much. It's, that's what you're here for. You're here for those kids. Another thing, I really want to give a shout-out to the girls' soccer team from AGHS. You know, when we started soccer back in the seventies, we thought, how are we going to get this community involved? Because I didn't know anything about soccer. So it's, it makes me really proud now to see that these young ladies competed with the guys to get that kind of recognition for CIF.
Anyone else? Well, I wanted to chime in, too, about the professional development. One of the best things about it is they created little prompts or situations. And then, as a board, we all discuss how we might handle those situations, which are really good, because in the last five years, things around schools, as you know, have really changed, and so we always need to be on our best behavior as far as governance goes. So thank you again, Dr. Bresch, for leading that up. All right. Dr. Fawcett, the superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Martin. And now it's my pleasure, even though we've heard about Dr. Bresch, now for the last few minutes, he's going to come up and provide his county superintendent's report. And we really appreciate you being here with us tonight, and welcome to the CMR Unified School District.
Thank you. One of my responsibilities under the state constitution is to report to all elected bodies in the county, which includes the school districts, the board of supervisors, and the city councils on a regular basis. So I will start out this evening, and first off, if, I just kind of remind people again of the, of the territory we span in our county. And with some of our northern districts, just as your district, serves students in the adjacent counties. So we serve students in Monterey, Kings, Kern, and Santa Barbara Counties, as well as San Luis Obispo County, depending upon which school district we're talking about here. All ten comprehensive school districts are solvent, as well as all three charters that are chartered within San Luis Obispo County. And just to clarify, there are other charter schools that have a footprint in San Luis Obispo County, but they're not authorized here. They may be authorized in Kern or through the State Department of Education. But the three that are here are grizzly, that the county office operates on Camp San Luis Obispo, Bellevue-Santa Fe, operated by San Luis Coastal, and then Almond Acres, which is situated in Paso Robles and is under the authorization of the county office as well. which is situated in Paso Robles and is under the authorization of the county office as well. As far as grizzly goes, we have two full female cohorts this year. Platoons, groups of females in the program. And so equal numbers with male and female this year. That's the first time that's happened. And grizzly now is coming up on, I believe, 26, 27 years. So very, very, very proud of that program. It's doing very well. And again, those cadets are available to do anything you would like as far as public service. You see them around, but high success rate there. A little bit of the data across the county that I've been sharing with other agencies. If you just look at state of California enrollment and Slow County enrollment, both have been on a somewhat gentle decline in the last few years, and that trend continues. I also wanted to show you a little comparison between teachers and teacher hires. Our county has remained consistent in the last few years of somewhere between 150 and 175 needed each year just to keep up with attrition through retirements or transitions or programs being created. And that number will taper off, but we're looking at probably about 150 across the county for the upcoming school year. Again, to mainly replace attrition that's occurring. Still, the largest shortages are in the special education, the mathematics, science, and bilingual education areas. I've been working with four universities right now to get any of them to agree to bring a speech pathology program into our county and to help in special needs, and our office stands behind even paying for that. I'm not giving up. Just right now, we're sending people out of the county to get certification. It's just not possible here. And on the higher ed front there, we're still in discussions with Questa, but it looks like we will have a bachelor's degree pathway for Questa and Hancock graduates that we can fund at least 25 candidates per year starting next year. And working with all of the HR departments across the county on that. So as it stands right now, if you work for any of the schools in San Luis Obispo County, County Office of Education is putting forward half a million per year to match dollars that the school districts, any of the LEAs have, to help fund employee education. And I say that as employee, not just teacher. We all need bus drivers. We all need parent educators. We all need people in our fiscal departments. As well as we need people in our classrooms. So it's paying to upskill employees. We are more likely to maintain employment and secure employment with individuals that have some local connection to our county. And those are graduates from Questa and Hancock. So if we can continue to attract those young people to stay in our community, we're more likely to keep them. So I'm committed to that at least for the next three fiscal years. All of your HR departments, all of your superintendents are aware of that. A few things countywide that I'm proud of, that I just want to highlight. Your district continues to be one of the largest players in the career technical education. I learned this today, and it was coming from the Community College Chancellor's office, that San Luis Obispo County has the highest percentage of students enrolled in dual enrollment in any county in the state. And I didn't realize that. So not necessarily the highest number, obviously LA would trump us there, but in terms of percentage. And you lead that in terms of districts. So something to be proud of. As a parent who enjoyed that, that saved our family $10,000 in tuition once our daughters matriculated to post-secondary in courses they had taken in high school that counted. So again, I keep saying that to parents. It's a wonderful opportunity. We're in negotiations with Questa College about renewing the Memorandum of Understanding coming up. The challenge is registration in Questa is not the same as registration in our K-12 schools. And I'm aware of that, Hillary. And I'm working on addressing it as best I can. The arts program, I was very happy to hear about Fly Me to the Moon. We're funding that with Michael Novak and Orchestra Novo. And any arts activities you want to bring to the district, as long as it's a reasonable, $5,000 to $10,000 or less request, our office has funds, a foundation I sit on to help that. And it's just that I want it to be available and accessible to students. So I know I'm working with several of your administrators on those types of activities. Board support and professional development, we're continuing to do that. We will have a, so you want to be a trustee, you want to be an elected board member, a couple of workshops coming up prior to the election season. And I would invite any of you that would like to join us in talking to prospective board members in our communities, what it's like, why you serve, and how this helps our community become a better place. So we'll continue to do that. I talked about dual enrollment. Disaster and County Office of Emergency Services. I'm happy to say that I think this year, communication was even smoother than last year. But our county tends to be very tight and able to communicate. The big thing that's important to understand is because we're so spread out over 4,000 square miles, you have Carissa Plains and Parkfield, which isn't even in our county, that are all part of our system here. The needs or the emergency challenges can be very different. You wouldn't think Morro Bay High School would be impacted by the rains. Well, most of us were open, but Morro Bay couldn't because the freeway floods there. So that communication goes out, but it is different across the county. And so how it works is each superintendent is notified from our office, the information we have from Office of Emergency Services. And then I remind people, each local jurisdiction needs to make a decision. Occasionally, I'll come out with a recommendation, as I did a year ago, that I think we all need to shutter. Well, every sheriff's department, every police department was saying the same thing. Those are the exceptions, not the norm. I will continue to give you as much information as we have, but I'll say your district is very good about responding, letting us know when there's questions or concerns. I talked about the matched funds. The Ticket to Teach program is one I wanted to highlight a little bit. Anyone entering the early childhood education realm right now, the county office has funds from both the state and a private donor to fund that training. And all of your HR departments across the county are aware of that. At this point, I think we have, is it 25 in the pipeline currently and 25 in the incoming group that are all getting certified? You might know that number. I thought you'd know it better than I would. But our goal is to get 25 per year trained in early childhood education and allow them for career advancement. They may become a classroom teacher. They may stay in ECE realm. They may move into another area of our system. I don't think it matters, and I think we have to change our mindset that, you know, I started in the profession when I was 22 and I've stayed pretty much in the same. That's not the same for the incoming generations, and we need to be okay with that. They may work for us for four or five years and then do something else, and we may get someone coming back later in their life. It is a different marketplace than when I entered the field. And we need to keep that in mind. Continuing with the classified to certificated, if any classified staff are wanting to move into certificated positions, they should contact your HR and we will find them money to pay for that. And the one condition is that they're employed. And I interpret employment, even to me, they're on your sub-list. We'll just leave it at that. Again, I told you, all LEAs are in a positive position. Very happy to report that Almond Acres did refinance its debt load and that situation has been taken care of. Charter schools can't bond like you can as a traditional LEA. So yeah, Ron did probably enjoy this. There's no where on the Saks form to show the money from the loan coming in. So they can have $2 million in the bank, but when we ran the multi-year, it showed them negative. It took us several tries to figure out how to change that because we're requiring all of the charters to be in the same accounting system that we all are in. So, but it's been taken care of. I wanted to share a little bit about the housing, and I'm going to jump to the slide right here. This, if you look at the larger building in the lower left portion of this picture, is the community school. That is our high school for students that have been expelled from their districts. Up the road a little bit, where you see the white there, enters into property just beyond that, maybe a little less than a quarter of a mile up the road. And we have started to construct housing units for employees. We have one that is being used. These are prototypes. The board of supervisors approved this about three months ago, and we've begun to move forward. And we're renting them for any school employees in the county at 50% market rate as those come on for up to five years with the goal that they could get into the housing. With the exception of Carissa Plains and Parkfield, most schools are within a commuting distance of this property, regardless of the district. Those two are kind of the outliers. However, both of them have housing for employees on those properties. So I'm not, this gives you an idea of what some of them look like. These are not just boring modular buildings, but we're repurposing the modular buildings that we've acquired. And I think we may have actually picked up one or two from your district. They're being completely renovated and turned into housing units. And then there's a carport that sits behind them. And they're tutus, about 1,100 square feet. And it's a, the one that we have occupied right now, the tenants are very happy and they're a little nervous as the clock starts to get closer to their five years. But the goal is to move forward on that. Some discussions with the Tascadero City on some of the property that is in Tascadero and a builder looking at that. And I also had conversations this morning with someone in Paso Robles regarding the same thing. So if your district, and I know I've spoken to Aurora Grande City, has property that is being considered, we're trying to put out any idea we can to put workforce housing out there for employees. And a couple of other things I just wanted to highlight before I conclude and take questions. We're going to schedule the summer boot camp again for youth. And these are exiting students from our high schools or that are starting in our community colleges or the workforce. And we're calling it our Jump Starter Boot Camp class. These, we did this last summer where we had 25 young people from the South County, 25 in Slow and 25 in North County, where there was a workforce training, what does it mean to be an employee, entirely conducted by the business sector. So Trust Automation, Idler's, Martin Resorts, Farm Supply. These employers came in and spoke to our students across the county, all of our students, the collective R. What is it like to be an employee? What are they looking for? And then those 25 employers held interviews afterwards. And of the 75 students that participated in this across the county, 62 were hired. Now, they may have stayed, worked for the summer. They may have continued. That to me wasn't as important as they've had that experience, they're hearing from the workforce. And I continue to say this when I speak to chambers and rotary groups, that we need to look at the actual data in that out of 10 adults, three to four hold a bachelor's degree or higher. But all 10 need employment skills and the ability to move forward. If you look at my mother, my mother did not earn her college degree until after I earned mine. Everybody's not on the same schedule. I have one sister who visited every community college in Santa Clara County before she finally finished. Everyone's on a different clock and that's okay. I practice now as we get closer to the summer and graduations. Instead of saying, what school are you going to, I'm asking young people, what are you planning to do next? We need to value those that are moving into our community colleges and into our workforce as much as we celebrate those who are moving into our universities. They're all important and they're all valuable. So that is my brief overview of the county where we are right now. I could get into the state budget and talk about that, but you've heard enough of that. So questions, anything that I can do to help you right now?
I just have a real silly one. So many times, students go through all of the schooling and everything else, but they don't know how to associate with the public or speak to the public. They have no clue. It's like, can I have your order, please? But what do you want? No, it's like, that's not going to build a business, nor is it going to build a, like hairdressers. You go in there and teach personality for one. So many times, they're just not ready for the workforce when you're out there, how to present themselves. Even like the other night when we went to the reclassification. When you have kids walk up there and they have their hoods on or their caps on, people need to teach them. If they're not going to learn it at home, they would must teach them at school.
I would agree. Were you talking to Noreen Martin last week? She was one of the presenters in the summer, and that was her speech to them. If you want to work for me, this is what, so that is part of the summer boot camp is really to teach young people about what are some of the softer skills, some of the important skills in moving into those entry-level jobs. I believe there's also been some discussion about trying to do one of these over the spring recess. The challenge is that it's different across, there's no uniform holiday anymore.
That's the question for you.
Oh, it would never happen. Sorry. Julian Crocker ran on that platform, if you remember, 20 some odd years ago. Tried to unify, I can't even get a Common Staff Development Day across the county. So if you could figure out how to have a common calendar across, let me know. Economically, it would make a lot of sense.
If I do, I get your job.
There are 13 different agencies that all have their opinion on their schedule and they can all vote on it. If I told you what the calendar should be, you'd probably be the first one to tell me, no, this is what we want.
You need to come to our meeting one more.
Any other questions or?
Well, thank you, Dr. Bresch.
No, and I thank you for your service and all the employees. It really, you know, I believe education is a calling. It's not just a job. And you serving as basically volunteer employees is admirable. And thank you for your service as well as all the employees. Oh, the last thing I did forget to say, we are going to celebrate employees again across the county in May. We have three destinations picked out where we will have free admission for school employees. The Melodrama, Blues Baseball, and Libretto Jazz Club in Paso Robles. And information will go to your HR departments about that. And this again is supported by the Educational Employees Credit Union, as well as the foundation through the county office. To just thank education employees across the county. So those will be a couple of opportunities for people to attend.
I just want to tell you, it's nice to hear that somebody else started in education when they were 22. I did too.
I'll tell you more about the other story when we have more time. Okay, thank you so much. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our superintendent's report, and I'd like to just welcome you all. Good evening and welcome to the business portion of our meeting. A couple of announcements before we get started with the official meeting in the Board of Education, where the public is invited to observe and provide comments. The speaker guards, which are yellow and blue in the back lobby, you may fill out if you'd like to speak on any of our items. Interpreter Elsa Hernandez, could you wave? Elsa is our interpreter for the evening if you need assistance. And as far as decorum for our meeting, on the last pages of our printed agenda, our decorum standards are stated. And thank you to our security team. Every meeting, I'm going to read this and some of you might learn to know it by heart. This is the guidance for public comment. Public comments are an opportunity for members of the community to address the board of trustees in the meeting of the school board that is open to the public. Members of the public are encouraged to address the board concerning any item on the agenda or any items of interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Public comments are limited to at most three minutes and no more than 20 minutes total for one subject matter under the discretion of me, the presiding officer. The board will not take any action or have discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda, except as authorized by law. This is why the board does not respond during the public comment section of our agenda. It is important to recognize that opinions and comments shared here are those of individual speakers and may not represent the views of our district, the board, and our STEM. Luciemar is committed to fostering an inclusive, welcoming, and safe environment at our meetings and schools. We respect everyone's right to express their ideas and opinions. All remarks must be free. All remarks must be free from personal attacks, particularly those based on legally protected categories such as race, religion, disability, and sexual orientation. Our district is dedicated to serving and nurturing all our students, guiding them to become responsible, ethical, and productive members of society. To honor this mission, please make sure your comments avoid profanity, demonstrate tolerance towards differing viewpoints, and exhibit exemplary conduct. Our students are watching and learning from us at all times. Please be aware that any disturbance or intentional interruption of the meeting is not permissible. In accordance with recently enacted law, excessive disruption by any individual or group will result in the board president revoking the individual or group's privilege to address the board. Disrupted participants may be warned and, if necessary, removed from the meeting. We value your participation in the public meeting of the Board of Education, and thank you for your cooperation in maintaining the efficiency, effectiveness, and civility of Luciar Mar. All right. So item number 139 is our consent calendar action items. Is there any questions from the board regarding these items? Then I'm going to close it to the board and open it up for public comment. Would anyone in the audience like to speak on items 1 through 9? Seeing none, I'm going to close it to public comment, bring it back to the board for any comments or considerations. Seeing none, I invite someone to make a motion. There's no questions, and I make a motion that we approve items 1 through 9 on the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved by Santos, second by Stewart. All vote, please, Santos. Yes, Stewart.
Aye.
Ando?
Yes.
Pham?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Item passes 6 to 0. Okay, so we're moving on to reports and presentations, resolution and proclamations. Item number 10, approval, adoption of resolution of the governing board of Luciar Mar Unified School District regarding layoff of classified positions, resolution number A82324-16. Dr. Handy?
Thank you, President Martin. Excuse me. On October 8th, 2021, Governor Newsom signed Assembly Bill 438 into law, which modified Education Code 45117 to allow the same notice and hearing rights to classified employees as has been afforded to certificated employees. California Education Code 45117 states permanent classified employees cannot be laid off during the school year. They can only be laid off for the following school year unless the layoff is due to the expiration of a specially funded program. Affected employees must be notified no later than March 15th that their services will not be required for the following school year due to a lack of work or lack of funds. After receiving notice, permanent classified employees have the right to request a hearing to determine if there is cause for not reemploying them for the following school year. In addition, Education Code 45298, it states that the general rule that persons laid off because of lack of work or lack of funds shall be eligible for reemployment for a period of 39 months. And Education Code 45308 states that order of layoff within the class shall be determined by length of service and reemployment shall be in order of seniority. I want to take this opportunity to highlight the work of Ms. Stewart in our office, who takes great pains and details to pay attention to all of these minute pieces of data that we need to follow and in notifying affected employees. The district finds it necessary to reduce or discontinue classified positions, and as a result, decrease a corresponding number of regular classified employees of the district effective at the end of the 2324 school year. And the positions are listed on the attached proposed resolution 4-16. Board approval is requested on resolution A-2324-16 regarding reduction or discontinuance of classified positions. And I serve at the board if you have any questions.
Do any trustees have questions for Dr. Handy regarding this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close it to the board and open it up to the audience. Would anyone in the audience like to comment on this item? Item number 10, adoption of resolution. Seeing none, I'm going to close it to the public comment, excuse me, and bring it back to the board for any comments or considerations. Well, I just want to say that that seems like the... It's 21 positions, which is lower than I've seen in years past, so thank you. Excuse me. Anyone else have any comments? Great, I'll accept the motion.
I move... I move for the adoption of resolution of the governing board of Luciar Mar Unified School District regarding layoff of classified positions, resolution number A-2324-16.
Second. It's been moved by Mayor, second by Candell. Roll call vote, please. Mayor?
Yes.
Candell?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
Pham?
Yes.
Stewart?
Aye.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passes 6 to 0. Item number 11, report acceptance, Measure I Citizens' Bond Oversight Committee findings report fiscal year 2223. Mr. Eichberger?
Thank you.
I have a feeling that some of our audience members are for this item.
Yes, thank you, President Martin. I have the great pleasure to introduce Mrs. Teri Akada, who, as Ms. Martin shared earlier, is a retired Luciar Mar School Board member. Today, she is serving in a different capacity. She has graciously accepted to be the Citizens' Bond Oversight Committee's Chair. Now, in terms of the policies related to the CBOC for short, the board adopted a resolution back in 2017 establishing the rules of the Bond Oversight Committee. And Mrs. Akada has stepped in to support as our chair of the new committee. That said, on February 20th, the committee had an opportunity to review the issuance of Series D of Measure I and to review the expenditures for fiscal year 2223. Today, Mrs. Akada, if she so chooses, would like to share a couple brief words. But ultimately, the committee did review the expenditure list from fiscal year 2223. And we do have another meeting coming up in April where we are going to do a much deeper dive and to also review the independent audit that I vaguely had conducted related to Measure I.
Hey, everybody. Our Citizens' Oversight Bond Committee, C-O-B-C, was charged pretty much with looking into and researching, excuse me, renewing... Sorry. We reviewed and approved the bond monies that were used for the school bond Measure I. And we did that on February 20th, and we did affirm and approve the information we got. The reason that they do exist is for a couple reasons, is to look over these expenditures, make sure they're all going to where they're supposed to be, and that none of them are being used for reasons that are... that aren't outlined in the ballot wording. You have to stay pretty true to that, and I think everybody realizes that. One of the fun things about being on the committee is you get to see a lot of what is going on. And there's our last meeting. We had a great tour of Roy Granny High School and three or four of the new facilities that are opening up there. Very exciting. We have that culinary, the cosmetology, and there's a... That was it. New classrooms, beautiful new classrooms. So nice to get those going. So it's nice. And I think the good thing also about this committee is being members of the community. We're actually all out there also able to sort of like give a cheer to our district and let them know that good things are happening, and you have good people working for you. And our district is just top-notch. And so we can also be PR while we're out there, which is also pretty exciting because we do have a great district. So anyway, we approved it. Our base is doing a good job. We're going to meet again in April, do a little more deep dive into things. And again, thanks to the district for getting Measure I on the ballot, getting it elected, getting it approved. And now you're actually doing it, and that's exciting.
Two other... Two other items to note. We are going to be doing a facility walk of one of our new elementary multipurpose rooms prior to the deep dive. And it is requested that the board accepts the Measure I Citizens' Bond Oversight Committee findings for fiscal year 2223.
Do any of the trustees have questions for Mr. Eichberger? Nope? Okay. I'm going to open it up to public comment. Does anyone in the audience like to share any questions or concerns regarding this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close it to public comment, bring it back to the board for any comments. Anyone have any comments? Mr. Stewart?
I first want to start by thanking Ms. Akada and the rest of the committee teams for actually stepping up and doing this and holding us accountable, which is, it's great. So thank you for volunteering to do that. And kudos again to our facilities team for keeping the hard administrative costs for bond oversight on some of the lowest, if not the lowest, in the county and probably the state. So all our money is going into the facilities, which I just want to shout that out, which results in our Fitch bond rating moving up in a positive way as well.
I think we all concur with Mr. Stewart. I see it daily, how much we squeeze every cent, every dollar here at Luciar Mar, unlike other districts, possibly. I would like to make sure that all of the people on the committee are recognized. That's Ms. Akada, Sandra Boquillo, Stephen Flood, Chuck Richards, Paul Herman, Anthony Lewis, Cindy Neighbors, Chad Robertson, David Thomas, and Shonda Willis. Any other members here tonight with you? No? Okay.
I would just like to ask Ms. Akada one question, kind of a simple one. What was the most impressive thing that you seen on your local tour?
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Pham?
We did a... Well, you did a report for us in regards to where our funds went. And I think that would be really good if we have that on our website. Do we have a website somewhere? So if you could let us, the public, know, and they can actually go and look into it, because it's quite impressive what we did with our money.
The Measure I page on our facilities website outlines all of the great work with some pictures as well. So it is a... Has been shared by a few of the board members. Executive Director Stenson and the FMO team have done a phenomenal job with some support sometimes from Amy Jacobs, capturing some awesome pictures. But ultimately, those documents related to Measure I, everything from the initial ballot to the funds are available, including audits as well. Some of the items, like the audit, are often also found on the business section where we have the independent audits listed.
All right. Any other concerns?
Can I make a comment quickly?
Yes, please.
So Mr. Eichberger, trustee Stewart mentioned our Fitch ratings. I think it might be good just to give an update on the Fitch ratings upgrade.
So this is a new one for me. Our bond is publicly traded in terms of they sell... When we do a bond sale, they rate what the district's ability to manage those monies, if you will. And they reevaluate yearly. And our rating went from A+. A+, it's like the best as it relates to school grades. For bond ratings, it's actually not. And we went from A+ to AA-, which you go, "Well, they added an A? They can do that?" Ultimately, it has to do with the fiscal solvency of the district, meaning our positive budget certification. It has to do with how efficiently we've spent our bond money in terms of when there are the bond sales. We have to sell or use those proceeds in certain periods of time. So they look at a litany of factors, and our rating was improved from an A+ to a double A-..
All right. This is a report, but they're asking for an acceptance. So you want to vote on that then to file it?
We vote to accept the...
Okay.
I move acceptance of Measure I Citizens' Bond Oversight Committee findings report for fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Second. It's been moved by Stewart, second by Pham, to approve item, the report and acceptance of Measure I Citizens' Bond Oversight Committee findings. Roll call vote, please. Stewart?
Aye.
Yes. Mayor?
Yes.
Candell?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
Yes. Item passes 6 to 0. Thank you very much, Ms. Akada, also. Okay, moving on to items scheduled for discussion, possible action. Item number 12, discussion, first reading, initial proposal for collective bargaining from the CMR Unified School District of the California School Employees Association, CSEA, and it's Chapter 275 for the 2023 to 2026 successor negotiations. Dr. Handy? That was an outlaw for me.
It sure was, yes. Thank you, President Martin. I'm going to go ahead and go over this again with a little bit of historical. I see some new faces in the audience. So Government Code 3540, commonly known as the RADA Act or EERA, governs employer/employee relations for California public school employees. Section 3547 specifically states, "Meeting and negotiating shall not take place until after the proposals have been presented to the public." The Sunshine Clause of the RADA Act requires that each party's initial bargaining proposal, the topics that will be negotiated, be presented for public comment at a publicized school board meeting prior to beginning negotiation process. And the public must be given a reasonable time to consider the proposal, comment publicly, and then comments are considered at a subsequent meeting of the governing board. The collective bargaining agreement between Luciar Mar and CSEA, Chapter 275, expired on June 30, 2023. The meetings of the governing board on both January 30th and February 13th served as the public's opportunity to comment on CSEA's initial proposal. The meetings of the governing board today and on March 19th will serve as the public's opportunity to comment on the district's initial proposal. So Luciar Mar Unified School District presents the accompanying initial proposal for the 23 through 26 successor negotiations with CSEA, and it's Chapter 275. I'll mention specifically, the district is proposing Article 7 related to holidays, seeking to update language to align with state law. Article 9 leaves, seeking to update language to align with state law and to add language clarifying procedures related to the exhaustion of paid sick leave. Article 17, the term of the agreement, we seek to update language for the purposes of setting the new agreement. And Article 19, seeking to update language to reflect changes in Education Code and board policy. And as many of you know me, as a former English teacher, we also seek to clarify non-substantive changes to update language and correct formatting in additional articles of the agreement. The proposed language changes will provide clarity of understanding and apply gender-neutral language throughout the agreement. And the district, of course, reserves the right to sunshine additional articles per EERA.
Any questions for Dr. Handy?
Do we have any idea the timeline for negotiations was...?
We have proposed dates after the district's second sunshine after the 19th. We're waiting for confirmation from CSEA.
Any other questions? All right. Anyone in the audience like to comment on this item? Item number 12. Seeing none, I'm going to close it to public comment, bring it back to the board. Anyone on the board have any concerns, questions, comments? No? We really don't have to vote on this. It's just a first reading. Thank you. Item number 13, public hearing, 2024 developer fee justification study. And you're already at the podium. Thank you.
Thank you, President Martin. The next two items, 13 and 14, are a partnership. The first is item 13, and it allows the public an opportunity to discuss the findings of a developer fee study. Ultimately, one of the requirements prior to the board taking any action related to a developer fee increase is the board is required to post, or the district is required to post 10 days in advance of a discussion of a potential cost increase or estimated... discussion of a potential cost increase or estimated cost increase related to facilities fees that are paid to the school district for development of buildings, whether residential or commercial within our district founding, the boundaries. On February, public notices were sent on February 23rd and February 28th to the San Luis Obispo Tribune, and there is an excerpt or a copy of the notice that was provided outlining today as an opportunity for a public hearing related to a potential developer fee increase.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Eichberger before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, I'm going to open the public hearing for the 2024 Developer Fee Justification Study. It is 8:03. Would anyone, anyone in the audience like to speak on this item, the public hearing for the 2024 Developer Fee Justification Study? Please come to the podium.
Hello, my name is Linda Moran, and I'm a retired teacher. I taught elementary school for 22 years down in Southern California. I've moved here to Napa a little over a year ago, and we love living here. We've been concerned about some of the developments that are coming and the impacts upon our schools that that will have.
Let me, let me interrupt you. This is about the Developer Fee Justification Study. We'll take your comments on other things regarding developments in our area under our public comment, but this is specifically on the Developer Fee Justification Study.
And and that's to increase the developer fee?
Yes, it is.
Okay, because that's what I was wanting you to do.
Okay, great. Tell us that you want us to do that.
So I'm sorry, I hadn't gotten there. Okay. When I started in my district, we were going through a great development period time, and the schools were really struggling to keep up with the development and the housing coming in. Though I've seen what has happened with crowded schools and having to put portables into schools and what that does to a school community. It, it makes it really difficult discipline wise because your your classrooms are more crowded, your playgrounds are more crowded. And my daughter's high school had two-story portables in their parking lots. So and she had 1,000 people in her graduating class. So when I heard about some of these developments, I was concerned with that type of thing happening here. So I wanted to support the policy of having the developers pay more to the school districts upfront. So that gives the school districts a chance to get ahead of the game so that they're prepared for those new incoming students because after all, as educators, we must always do what's right for our students. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And if you made that card out, we'd love to have it so we just have your name. Yeah, you can just give it to. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak during the public hearing for the 2024 Developer Fee Justification Study?
The card?
No.
No, you don't. I wasn't even aware of this subject or topic. I'm Mike Fuller, local resident, have been for a long time. I once asked somebody who was superintendent of schools a long time ago what the school fee was all about because I had just written a very large check so I could build a house to live in here. And I was told it was because we were building so many houses in the state. You know, and they were, they kept making reference to Southern California, 500 homes, 1,000 homes, and the populations were going up so fast, they were needing new schools overnight. So I followed up with the question of, well, how's our school attendance going in Luciarum School District? And they said that school attendance tends to be drifting down, which presents a different situation in our district. And I just, I took a picture of something that was up here a minute ago showing the same thing. If I'm not mistaken, I think the enrollment is going down. And if what I saw up here was true and right, and based on previous comments, I I don't quite understand. It's not like we're getting greater impacts by more students moving in. I think the reality is our student population is going down. So I think you got to take that into consideration when are we needing more money for quote unquote more students in our district? But this just doesn't sound rational unless I'm missing something. Like the previous one said, you know, new developments doesn't always mean increased population in our school enrollment. So we do have a serious issue though with affordability. I think more people would say that in our district that homes are getting so hard to afford, but all of us just keep throwing more and more and more fees onto these homes like it's somebody, you know, we're just spending someone else's money and it's really making it difficult for people. You hear it all the time. Can't afford to live here. Well, this is just one more, you know, straw on the camel's back. It's like, where does it end? I would get it if our student population was going up. It would make sense. But I think each of you know that's not the case. I just saw it up on the screen a few minutes ago. So I would ask you to strongly consider that and realize what you're actually saying and what you're saying is the rationale for raising these. So please think about that.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller. Anyone else like to speak on the public hearing for the 2024 Developer Fee Justification Study? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. And like Mr. Eichberger said, this is a tandem item with item number 14.
So the next item is item 14, and it is the Developer Fee Justification Study that was conducted by Total School Solutions. And one of the things that the Developer Fee Study examines is cost escalation for construction. And the thing that the developer fees are bringing in revenue to the district for are to build buildings or to repair or replace buildings that have reached the end of life expectancy, meaning a building that is so dilapidated that it is being red tagged or could be red tagged in the near future. So developer fees can be used to either build new classrooms, which when we think about our expansion of transitional kindergarten, we have a project in the hopper for Dorothea Lang Elementary to add to what are called the jumbo classrooms, TK and K, could be either because we are seeing an increase of enrollment in our elementary sites. So these developer fees, we hold as a district, they have a separate fund account. Those monies are kept separately, and it is audited each year to make sure those developer fees are not being spent on anything other than those outlined as expenditures by the state, meaning that the state says, yes, you can build new classrooms or replace a portable classroom with a permanent classroom. So there's certain things that they say developer fees can be used for. So while our district's enrollment is actually up this year over last year, I I understand that countywide and statewide declining enrollment is something we're experiencing. And the district, as a 10-year average, has been experiencing declining enrollment. Current year at Seveds, we were up 29. We have continued to see growth during our school year for enrollment. And there has also been growth in terms of the additional programs that we're providing to our students, meaning the ELOP program, which is extended after-school coverage and support of our students, of which there's been some presentations to the board about, as well as the statewide expansion of transitional kindergarten. And these developer fees are monies that the person building that new house for the lifetime of that house. Meaning even if I'm building a house and don't have kids, that's not the case. Obviously, I have a freshman at AG. But if I was building a house and I don't have kids, I would still pay that developer fee because developer fees were designed by the state to offset any student that would ever live in that house. So it's not just right when the house is built, it's the lifetime of the house. So ultimately, construction, as Executive Director Stenson and myself has shared in the past, has increased the cost exponentially in the last five years. And ultimately, the level one developer fees are set by the state as what the state feels are appropriate fees a district should be bringing in as long as they meet a set of criteria. So that set of criteria is outlined in the Developer Fee Study that says we are expending our monies on the specified things that the space in our schools based on enrollment trends. They justify us needing to increase those fees to keep pace with inflation. Ultimately, during COVID, the board decided that it wasn't the right time to raise fees. And now we are bringing this Developer Fee Study to you today to match the updated Developer Fee Level One, Developer Fees that the state have a set as part of the the state allocation board.
All right, thank you. Questions from trustees? Ms. Mayor?
So the Dana Reserve that's going proposed down in Napo, what's the projected number of students for that? The projection on that?
Excellent question, and I would love to give the lawyer's answer. It depends. And it depends on a number of factors. One, how many age restricted houses they are going to have in the development. So it, it really does range from, it could be 400 elementary students, 135 middle school, 135 secondary, up to 600 elementary students. It really depends on the generation rate. So we have an established generation rate that determines how many students each new development would bring. And the the rates range, we have two different rates that we look at. One was established by Davis Demographic, where they actually geocode all of the addresses in the school district. And they look at all the students in the school district based on the address. They look at all the housing and the number of students in those houses, and then they look at site capacity. They look at if I live in Grover Beach's rain radius, but I go to school at Grover Heights. They look at all of those things to determine kind of what the district-wide generation rate is. And then we also have a generation rate that we've been using and looking at that is tied to a combination of Santa Maria's growth and student generation rates and San Luis's student generation rates. And it's kind of a, an average of those two. Ultimately, we're in a very different situation with the prospect of the Dana Reserve because there have not been any large scale developments like the Dana Reserve. The the closest large development was Trilogy that had, you know, age preferred, and there was some different things. This is the first larger development district-wide, but it does, as I said, depend the number of age restricted.
What is our smallest school population and our largest, I'm just elementary, smallest elementary, largest elementary?
So are you looking at enrollment as a snapshot today? Our smallest is Branch by a hair. And our largest, back to that lawyer answer, it depends. Some days it's Dana, some days it's Dorothea Lang, some days it's Harlow. And it really does fluctuate. They are all hovering close to 600 students right now. Right now is a snapshot. It's Dana Elementary in Napo.
So if we add 200 kids, we don't have room for them?
We don't, and we are working on a plan. We actually, Executive Director Stenson, has been working with an architect on a feasibility study for Dorothea Lang and Pomo Elementary and Dana, looking at what it could look like based on that range of students and the build out of that development. Meaning they are planning a phased build that could take anywhere from seven to 13 years from when they break ground. And we're looking at what the phasing could look like and how we could potentially grow the schools to match that growth. And the the idea of level one fees sets that minimum of what a builder would be paying to the district to allow us to expand our school sites. In addition, Dr. Fawcett's been working very closely with what's called a mitigation agreement where we could potentially get above what that level one fee is. However, a lot of those agreements are tied to what the district is actually charging for level one fees. Very difficult for a school board to say, give us above level one when you're not even charging level one.
Any other questions, Ms. Santos?
Donna? Yeah, the Dana, just on the Dana Reserve also, which is in my trustee area. And I've heard some people say, ask a question when they are considering the increase in student population as a result, you know, projected as a result of that development. And I've heard comments like, well, isn't that a great thing? We're going to have, you know, increased money, increased ADA funds for those extra students. And I wonder if you could just briefly discuss the difference of between what that money, would we get money per student based on attendance? What that is designed to cover as opposed to developer fees and school facilities?
Excellent question. When we, when we think about developer fees, those are earmarked for facilities only. When we think about increased enrollment, that is our operating costs for our salaries, for teachers, for our classified staff. If we think about school sites growing, not that I want to compare to Santa Maria Benita, but when you have a very large elementary school with over 800 students, 900 students, they start layering on additional support, whether that's additional counseling, additional assistant principals, deans, a lot of districts like to call them. Though those revenues that are being brought in from those students, think of them as operating costs because we have an extra, how many students using the restroom? How much more toilet paper and paper towels are we going through? There are all of those other costs associated with the additional students. That's what the enrollment really pays for. These developer fees are tied directly to those facilities upgrades that are tied to growth or, as I said before, replacement of buildings that are in such disrepair that they're at their end of life.
Ms. Santos, did you have a question?
I have two questions. First of all, what if you own a home and say, for God's sake, it burns down or there's a flood? You know, wipes it all out, and you have to rebuild? Use the same developer fees or the newer? No, or just does?
I want to say you don't pay developer fees.
You don't?
You have to expand. So if if you're replacing the same footprint, say I have a 1,500 square foot house. If that house, you know, heaven forbid, burnt down, and I replaced it with a similar plan that was the same square footage, you wouldn't pay developer fees. If however, I decided, hey, I want to add that second story, and that 1,500 square foot house is now a 25 square foot house, then you pay the increase of square footage. At least that's my understanding of how the developer fees were. It it's expansion or a new home.
Okay, like in Grover now, they're making low income condos. So do we get some of that?
They are paying developer fees.
So we have two big units that are supposedly going in for low cost.
And Ms. Sue Stewart would say, we have cashed some of those checks and they have been developed or they have been put into our developer fee fund already. I remember when one check, I want to say it was close to $370,000 was brought in by one of those developers. It, we, we had to pull it up on the map to look where the development was occurring, and it was in Grover Beach's boundaries.
Great. Any other questions from trustees? I'm going to close it to the board, open up to public comment. Would anyone like to comment on item number 14, 2024 Developer Fee Justification Study and Resolution 2324-17? Seeing none, I'm going to close it to public comment, bring it back to the board for comments. I think one of the things that, you know, even if our enrollment's down, I, I, I use the example of State Street in Santa Barbara. All the action was way up above, you know, Paseo Nuevo. Well, all those places are empty. All the action is now down, you know, near the water. And so even though And so even though our enrollment hasn't increased in ten years, let's say, uh, over a ten-year period, our needs are like silly pudding. They're constantly changing, whether it's TK, whether it's we got more high schoolers, whether we got more, uh, kids with special needs who have, you know, seven kids in a classroom. So they're, they're forever changing our needs. Any other comments?
Also, um, when you get the developers' fees, um, it goes into a special fund specifically to help with our schools. But what we don't realize is that those funds have diminishing, um, buying power. As inflation increases, that money doesn't increase, you know? And when we need to use it to build another school, we're not, it's like catching up, I think. Or am I wrong thinking that, you know?
The money does gain a little bit of interest sitting in that account. However, the interest typically is not keeping, at least currently, keeping pace with the escalation in terms of cost escalation for construction.
For products and labor.
For sure, yeah.
Any other comments? Okay, I'm looking for an approval of motion for item number fourteen.
Move approval of two thousand twenty-four developer fee justification study and Resolution A dash twenty-three, twenty-four dash seventeen, increase in statutory school facility fees and adoption of SEQA notice of exemption.
Second. It's been moved by Stewart, second by Mayor. Roll call vote, please. Stewart?
Aye.
Mayor?
Yes.
Tendell?
Yes.
Santos?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Yes. Item passes six zero. Item number fifteen, second reading, revision of board policies, administrative regulation, exhibits and bylaw. Dr. Fawcett?
Thank you, President Martin. As you know, from time to time, law changes and policies change, practices within the district change, and, um, we're required to update our board policies, ARs, exhibits and bylaws. Uh, before you sign, it's the second reading of, um, such bylaws and regulations related to school facilities, course of studies, selection and evaluation of instructional materials, supplementary mater- materials, and library media centers, as well as, um, selection and evaluation of instructional materials again, and, um, also closed session provisions. Um, it's a recommendation that you, um, adopt these, uh, this evening. Thank you.
Anyone on the board have questions for Dr. Fawcett? Okay, I'm gonna close it to the board and take it out to the public comment. Would anyone in the audience like to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public comment, bring it back to the board for any comments. Um, this is the second reading, so we will need to approve it tonight.
My only comment is I appreciate having it twice because it's a lot of reading to do, and it's nice to have a second opportunity to go through it.
Yes, and I would say that the, the three items on closed session, there's a little tweaking to it. So, um, if, you know, we might, uh, all study that part really well, so. Anything else? Okay, I'm looking for a motion.
I move we approve the, the revision of board policies, administrative regulation, exhibits and bylaws.
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Mayor, second by trustee Stewart, to approve the revision of board policies, administrative regulation, exhibits and bylaws, item number fifteen. Roll call vote, please. Mayor?
Yes.
Stewart?
Aye.
Dale?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Item passes six zero. Item number sixteen, we've come to the point in our agenda where we're at the student expulsion, student discipline case number twenty-three, twenty-four dash zero, twenty-eight.
Uh, I would like to move, uh, approval of agreement and stipulation for immediate expulsion and sus- suspension of expulsion. One, the Board of Trustees finds there is cause to expel student case number two-three dash two-four dash zero, two-eight from all schools in the district for violation of Education Code Sections four-eight-nine-zero-zero C and four-eight-nine-zero-zero J. Two, it is further moved that the board adopts the recitals, agreements, rehabilitation plan and readmission review date as set forth in the February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four agreement and stipulation for immediate expulsion and suspension of expulsion.
Second.
It's been moved by Tendell, second by trustee Stewart. Roll call vote, please. Dale?
Aye.
Stewart?
Aye.
Santos?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Item passes six zero. Okay, we're at public comment on items not on the agenda. This is a time for the public to speak to us about things under our jurisdiction for up to three minutes on items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak, please come up to the podium. Seeing no one, I'm gonna close public comment on items not on the agenda and move to adjourn this meeting. Thank you very much for joining us. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, March nineteenth. Appreciate your concern about our schools. Thank you for being here.